All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the November eighteenth.
Recording in progress.
Two thousand twenty-one school committee meeting. In keeping with an act relative relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law by Governor Baker on June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. This meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by board members will be remote and attendance shall count towards quorum. The meeting will be broadcast live on Facebook and recorded on ECAT. This meeting is open to the public and we will take questions by the chat feature at the bottom of your screen. Please make sure to include your full name and address. We'll do our best to answer all questions. However, we will not read questions that have already been answered. All right. Item one, discussion and possible vote on the Hall of Fame display. Dr. Cabral and Mr. Matthews.
Also, Mr. Matthews and Joanne Faust will be joining us. This was brought before the committee for your last meeting and they made a presentation. Tonight it will require a vote to approve for this project to move forward. So, Mr. Matthews and Ms. Faust are both here to present on that. If you have any questions, of course, please address them before you take your vote. Mr. Matthews, did you have anything to add or any questions?
I think he might be on mute.
I was on mute, I'm sorry. You'd think by now I'd be.
We would have told you if we could have seen you.
I'll defer to Joanne on this. She did the presentation, I wasn't able to be here for the last one, so.
Sure, no problem.
Um, I guess the only question is if you've all vote in the affirmative, then I'm assuming that I meet with, Bill and I would meet with Kelly Kavanaugh and move on from there about, you know, setting up the electrician and the installed people. That would be my only question for all of you. Or if any of you had any more questions for me and Bill regarding the system.
Michelle, you're on mute as well.
Um, can you just remind me again of the placement in the atrium for this?
It's going to go, if you've been in that atrium before, there's, I believe it's five panels, black panels along the left-hand side and they have gold or polished bronze, whatever plaques on them. We'd be taking out the middle panel and a little bit of the two panels on either side of it. So it would be going up the wall, um, right where those existing panels are. And I also believe the logo that was over those panels would also be coming down because it would be redundant because we're probably gonna put the logo on the actual item itself, so.
Thank you. Jen?
Um, Joanne, I recall from the last meeting that, um, I think you were waiting on confirmation of the final donation. So if we're moving ahead with a vote on that, has that come in or you're all set there?
I haven't heard back from John Morley yet. I'm hoping to call him first thing tomorrow to find out if they did, uh, if their Board of Directors did approve it. Um, I think their Board of Directors meeting was either Wednesday or it might be happening right now. So unfortunately, I don't have that last piece of the puzzle. Um, but I think if we don't get that donation from them, um, Bill, I know we've talked about other people that we can ask for donation and I'm, I'm pretty confident that we can, that we can raise those funds for the last bit of it as well.
Yes, I agree, and I think that it's a much-needed, um, upgrade to our Hall of Fame. We're at that point, I think Joanne explained it, um, and I just want to make sure the committee knows I fully support going this direction.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, all right, so we need to do a vote. Can I get a motion, um, to accept the proposal for the Hall of Fame display at OA?
So moved, O'Neal.
Can I get a second?
Star second.
Roll call vote?
O'Neal, yes.
Dorian, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Jackie, did you?
I'm sorry, Wiseman, yes.
Star yes.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you both.
All right, discussion and impossible vote on girls hockey. Dr. Cabral?
Sure, Mr. Matthews is gonna stay with us. He's going to present and provide information about varsity girls hockey at Oliver Ames. We have been in a co-op and Mansfield has been reevaluating their program. They realize that they are paying an unfair portion of the cost. So they reached out to see how we can work with them to adjust how the sport is being paid for. A vote is required since this is now an MIAA-recognized sport and funding has come completely from the boosters to this point. We're looking for funding to come from the school department and of course, Mr. Matthews has all the information regarding that. And that will require, uh, your consideration and a vote. Mr. Matthews? You're muted, sorry. I hate saying that, but I, I don't know how else to signal. Sorry.
Thank you. So this, um, girls hockey co-op has existed for over ten years. Um, I've been in my position for nine and when I came into the position it existed, um, I think it was in its infancy at that point in time. So it was Mansfield and Oliver Ames at the time. It was entirely funded by the boosters at that time. Uh, the goal with the co-op programs typically is that you want to see if you can generate enough interest within each school and eventually build your own program. Um, we existed for several years, I think three or four, and at some point Foxborough had some players that they wanted to join and we were, we were a little bit low on the numbers at that point in time and so Foxborough joined the, uh, co-op approximately five or six years ago. So there have been three schools that have been involved in the co-op. Um, the, the program has been tremendous. I'm always amazed at how the three schools and the girls that play on that team, what a great culture it is and what a great experience that they have. Um, I've had the opportunity to go to their banquet several years and they are just as close as any team that you would have at any one of the individual schools. So I think that, you know, I've been a big supporter of the co-op for that reason, the experience that they've had. And they're, they're competitive. Um, they've made the tournament a few years and they've had, um, I think a lot of fun playing for the team. Along the way, uh, Mansfield ended up putting some money into their budget, uh, their athletic budget to help fund it, to help fund the coaches' salaries. My understanding was that we could do the co-op, but we were not allowed to spend any athletic budget money on it, so we didn't. Um, so the boosters really kind of chipped in our portion of it. Um, at this point in time, Mansfield has kind of gone through all of the analysis and has really come to us and said, you know, it's time to, it's, it's time to square this up and I think it's, it's probably overdue. Um, I'm, I'm a little surprised at the timing, but I'm not surprised at the message where each school is being asked to pay their fair share on this. So the way the numbers break out, there are twenty-two expected players this year and that's pretty typical. And the breakdown for the number of players is eleven for Mansfield, six or seven, I'm assuming seven from Foxborough and five from Oliver Ames. And that is a very typical breakdown as well. We may have had six or seven as the high point from Oliver Ames, but that is really more of a, a, um, an unusual year for us in numbers. We're usually four or five, maybe as low as three in one or two years. So when, when the expenses were projected and looking at historical norms, um, the expected expense for this team is thirty thousand dollars and the big expenses are ice, coaches, buses and officials. Um, and I think that thirty thousand dollar number is, is pretty accurate. Um, breaking that down, it comes out to approximately fourteen hundred dollars per player. And that, um, you know, with five players, the way it would be allocated is that essentially Mansfield would pay the entire freight and then bill the other schools on a per-player basis. So our portion of that would be an estimated seven thousand dollars this year. I, I feel like we need to move forward with this to really be fair and equitable with the other schools and support, um, the girls hockey program in the way that we do the boys hockey program from a Title IX and gender equity standpoint. So it would be my recommendation to move forward with the funding for them. Um, I see Marilyn's on the phone now or on the call now as well too, so, um, she can answer questions about the available funding forward if you have any questions on that.
Does anyone have any questions? Jen?
Uh, Bill, how do the expenses that are covered, um, by this thirty thousand compare to what the operating budget covers for the boys team? Because I know, I know we pay for the ice time. I think some or all of the coaches and buses for, I think, games, but not practices. And the boosters are paying some, kind of covering some of the operating expenses, stipends for assistance and things like that. Maybe I, I don't recall the exact breakdown, but.
That's a great question, Jen, and I kind of anticipated that question would come up.
Yeah, you know me.
The numbers that we had, uh, the analysis that we did a couple of years ago for boys hockey came out to almost exactly that same amount. So the school-funded portion was about fourteen hundred dollars per player.
Okay. Okay.
Anyone else? Okay.
Michelle?
Yes.
Uh, how does this square with the, um, the fees that, I mean, this is a, a co-op situation. Do athletic fees, uh, figure into this equation?
That's a great question too, Caroline, and I mentioned that currently because we were not funding any portion of the program, we did not charge a fee for it. But as part of this recommendation, I recommend that we do charge the same fee for girls' ice hockey that we do for boys' ice hockey and that fee would be two hundred and fifty dollars per player.
Thank you, I'd already muted myself.
Does that have to be part of our vote, a fee charging? Dr. Cabral?
You're voting to have this be a recognized sport at OA that we would pay for and it does, uh, require the fee, just like every other sport. Instead of being treated differently, it's going to be, um, the same in every way, excuse me, including the athletic fee.
So that doesn't need to be a separate vote, like when we review fees and we vote on them if we're changing, okay?
No.
All right. Any other questions? Well, okay. Um, then can I get a motion to approve the, um, girls' ice hockey? I'm not sure how to word it, to be recognized?
Recognition of the girls' ice hockey program at Oliver Ames.
Okay, so can I get a motion to recognize the girls' ice hockey program at Oliver Ames and to be funded as such?
Our enthusiastic yes.
O'Neal enthusiastic, uh, second.
All right, roll call vote?
O'Neal, yes.
Dorian's, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes. Star, yes.
Great, thank you. Awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews, yes, it's very exciting, thank you for your support, certainly should be this way, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your support, you guys have a good night.
You as well.
All right, next up, discussion and possible vote to approve a foreign travel trip.
We have another person joining us. This is an Oliver Ames request. Uh, Principal Kelly Kavanaugh will be presenting this proposal on behalf of teacher in the Spanish department, Gemely Neely. There are also two representatives from Education First who will be attending to answer any questions you might have. This trip is scheduled for Puerto Rico, April thirteenth to twentieth. This was previously approved by the school committee in two thousand nineteen for April of two thousand twenty. However, due to COVID, the trip was canceled at that time. So this is a rescheduling of that trip. You have the information in your packet. Uh, Ms. Kavanaugh is here, the Education First representatives are here and, uh, Ms. Kavanaugh, please feel free to, uh, make any comments. And then, uh, school committee, of course, if you have any questions, uh, to consider before your vote. Welcome everyone, this, Mrs. Kavanaugh?
Thank you so much, thank you, thank you for having us and I, um, I'm happy to present this trip on behalf of the, um, the chaperones and the person leading it, which is Ms. Gemely Neely, one of our Spanish teachers here at the high school. Um, and with us, I'm gonna just take a minute to let the EF representatives, Kat and Caroline, introduce themselves.
I'll jump off here first. Um, nice to meet everybody, thank you for having us this evening. My name is Kat, I am working closely with Gemely Neely and have been for the last, um, nine months or so to make this trip happen. Really excited to be here and answer any questions that you might have.
And I'll introduce myself as well, my name is Caroline Godet. I am the director of our East Coast team here at EF. So, um, I manage our teams that work with all schools and all educators from Maine down to South Carolina that are excited to get back out on the road for this year.
Thank you. Ms. Pro, do you want to share your screen?
I'm actually, I was actually just going to ask you to, I don't actually have access to the presentation unfortunately.
Let me, give me one second and I will get that ready for you, thanks for your patience. Okay. My gosh, it's been, it's been a while since I navigated sharing my screen on a Zoom, thanks for your patience, okay. So, share screen. How's that, can we see?
Yes, we can.
Great. So, um, this, that I shared before, this trip, or, uh, Dr. Cabral did, this trip to Puerto Rico was originally planned, um, several years ago as a service learning experience with EF. Um, so the original trip was in two thousand nineteen, um, as a sophomore trip. And this year, that same group of students who are now seniors are looking to go, um, in April of twenty, uh, twenty-two, next April. Um, moving forward, these are just some important updates about, um, the trip. So when the final deadline is for people to enroll. Um, it, we speak to, um, hear the policy around rejoining. If you, um, originally requested a refund from the trip back in two thousand nineteen, these, um, students and families will, um, be able to apply any money that was already put forth towards the trip again this year. Um, and those vouchers that they received, um, are worth a hundred percent of the monies and can be reapplied upon enrollment to the trip. The COVID safety protective measures in Puerto Rico, um, are pretty, um, thorough, uh, due to the fact that it is a small island and they want to stay safe and healthy. So every student has to, um, every traveler, I should say, has to have a negative PCR COVID test within seventy-two hours before attending the trip, um, and masks will be worn throughout the entire trip. The, uh, EF, which I'll let them speak to in more detail if you have any questions, but they have, um, they have a, a fairly well-planned, um, clear response to any COVID concerns that come up, um, for students while they are on the trip, uh, that make sure that they get the best care in case they have to quarantine. And these, this slide outlines, um, those exact responses. The tentative itinerary includes a variety of different, um, places to see, uh, travel destinations as well as the service learning experiences that they will have in Puerto Rico. Um, and the service learning experiences will be, uh, identified and shared when the trip gets a little bit closer. A lot of it has to do with what the current need is in Puerto Rico, um, as we approach the travel date. So these are some of, this is, um, a tentative itinerary, it's definitely subject to change. But in general, these are the places where students visit and the experiences that they have. The next few days are listed here. And once again, um, similar to, uh, the service learning trip, the flights will be, um, will be booked a little bit closer to the trip and once we have the, the total number of students participating on the trip. Some additional travel details, um, cash is needed for activities, but there's no currency exchange. It explains the luggage that the students are allowed to bring. Um, Ms. Neely here has put a link to the TSA, um, travel guidelines, um, as well as a reminder that birth certificates or license is needed to travel to Puerto Rico. And this trip truly does match up with the visions and values of both the World Language Department, our school, Oliver Ames, and the district's mission and, um, trans foundational transfer goals. Um, so this slide, um, you know, to, to summarize basically shares that, um, uh, the students attending on this trip are getting the opportunity to become compassionate and contribute, compassionate and contributing members to our global economy and our society, which fall in line with our strategic goals. In terms of the OA mission expectations and the twenty-first century academic expectations we have here at Oliver Ames, it gives them the opportunity to collaborate, be curious, uh, leadership opportunities and I think most importantly respecting cultural differences and a global perspective, um, which they will have all of those experiences in Puerto Rico. Especially with the service learning piece, I'm very excited about that. Um, and then finally with our foundational transfer goals, uh, students are given the opportunity to build positive relationships, persevere through, um, traveling in a, uh, in a space where the English is not the first language, right? Um, and communicating in that way, demonstrating respect and empathy as well as responsibility, um, within a global community. And then finally, this, this final slide, um, Ms. Neely has, uh, summarized all of the ways that, uh, this trip matches up with the educational philosophy and the goals of our district as a whole. So that is the presentation that they've shared with us. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen, but I'm happy to go back to that if needed and open up, um, for questions. And please feel free to jump in and ask Kat, um, Caroline or myself any questions about the trip.
Does anyone have a question? Caroline?
It sounds really, uh, you know, wonderful. I, I do think that that is, uh, Puerto Rico is certainly a place where there are many opportunities for service learning. I do have a question about why vaccines are not being, uh, required. Are they at least being strongly encouraged? Because obviously, um, you know, you want the youngsters to be protected themselves, but also to be protected, to be protecting, um, those that, with whom they'll come into contact in Puerto Rico.
So that's a great question, Caroline. What we have found with several of our destinations, we are not requiring vaccine, but there are some educational institutions that are. So if that is a decision that the school would like to make and the district would choose to proceed with, that is something that we would be fully supportive of. We are finding that there are some destinations that we are requiring vaccines. So places like New York City, where the city itself has imposed a mandate to require vaccinations for places like Broadway or different restaurants, we're finding that to not be the case in Puerto Rico currently. However, if the school does choose to say any travelers on this trip are requiring a vaccination, then that is something that the school can choose to do.
Okay, I, I'll just, uh, push a little more then. Um, so you're essentially saying that it would only be the requirement of the actual destination that would influence whether or not your agency would require vaccination. So what do you do as an agency? That's a little disappointing, to be honest. But what do you do as an agency in terms of strongly encouraging vaccination? Or do you just leave that whole thing alone?
We do, we, we allow for the schools and the educators to make that decision. Now, what I will say is, should there be a situation that comes up in which, you know, Puerto Rico does choose to, or we find that vaccination would influence the actual experience on tour, that's a point in which we would raise it and we'd say, okay, you know, this is something that would be required and would impact the student experience on the tour itself. So we are not necessarily requiring it, we are highly encouraging it. But for those students that say there are certain health requirements or things like that, um, you know, we do have the PCR test required within seventy-two hours prior to departure on tour. Um, and then, you know, mass hand sanitation throughout. Uh, but it's not necessarily something that we as an organization are requiring or mandating for travelers. But I will say the group will be solely with students from this specific educational institution. Um, so it won't be other students from around the country that they are necessarily interacting with or on the bus, things like that.
Well, obviously I'm also concerned with the, the population of Puerto Rico and those with whom they'll be interacting, so. Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So if I'm hearing you right, we as a school committee could add that as a contingency in our vote, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments?
Michelle, could we clarify that with, with Leisha, since the vote we were taking was whether or not to approve the, the trip? As you know, I would strongly, strongly advocate for vaccines, but, but I'm not sure that it's actually part of the vote. If the, the agency itself is saying that basically it's, it's, um, it's sort of a separate vote of the, of each district or, uh, maybe misunderstanding. I mean, obviously if we make it a requirement as part of the vote, that may, that may be fine. I'm just not sure that's, since we didn't announce that as part of what we were voting on.
But I think that would be the questioning, right?
Pardon me?
That is something we've discovered through questioning.
Yes, it is, no, I, no, I agree, I just, I'm just wondering if Leisha could clarify whether or not we had to specifically state that that would be part of the vote on the agenda.
I believe that you can vote on the trip if they, if you add the, um, fact that student would need to be vaccinated. However, that's actually a bigger conversation that we haven't had yet because, uh, this would not be in isolation, there are other situations like this. And I know that there will be questions about out-of-state trips and field trips and other things of that nature that, uh, are probably related and that conversation probably deserves to be one on its own. We haven't mandated vaccines really for anything yet, uh, including for staff in the building or for volunteers. So, um, while you could approve it with that caveat, I would, I would caution you that I think that entire mandatory vaccination conversation probably requires a more in-depth conversation uh, before applying it to any individual circumstance.
Michelle, I have to say that I agree with that and you know, there's no stronger advocate, advocate for vaccines than yours truly. But I, I do think that because we haven't had the broader conversation yet, um, we can't really sort of legitimately make that a, a condition. I mean, honestly, if, if it were my druthers, I, I would make it a condition. I just, I disagree with Leisha that we need to have a larger conversation about, um, you know, how we're going to approach the whole vaccine issue.
So we approved a trip last meeting and I know we have more trips coming up. Is that a conversation we need to have before we start approving trips?
I think the last one, the tour company, because it was internet, you know, going to Europe, they, they required vaccinations. That wasn't even an option for us.
No, I know, but now that it's caught by mask, I'm wondering if that, if Dr. Cabral's saying that that needs to be a different conversation, is that a conversation we should have knowing that other trips are coming down and they may or may not? I'm actually surprised, I thought it was just one of those givens, so.
So Caroline, um, so is EF not requiring, I mean, is EF only requiring vaccination when the actual destination requires it? And if, if that's true, uh, what are, what have been the conversations within your group about that?
So we are requiring vaccination for all international destinations. So that would make sense that if there were to have been any other organization you'd been working with, you know, it is an industry standard currently that any international trips are requiring vaccinations for student participation. Now domestically, that is a little bit of a different story because that is, and Puerto Rico would be considered a domestic destination. When it comes to the domestic conversation here, that is taken a little bit more on a case-by-case basis. So for instance, as I mentioned, locations like New York City, where the itinerary itself would be significantly impacted based upon whether or not a student could show proof of vaccination. We're finding currently that that requirement is not necessarily in place in a place like Puerto Rico. So a lot of our educators are taking that a little bit more on a case-by-case basis. Um, and we're not necessarily finding that students would need to show proof of vaccination upon entry into. upon entry into the country, upon entry into different restaurants, or upon participation in the different activities that we do see taking place.
No, thank you. You did, you did actually state all of those reasons before. So I guess that leaves me a little puzzled about the conversations between, it's EF, right, and the, your contacts in Puerto Rico. And, and, you know, I'm a little surprised frankly that those people in Puerto Rico who are welcoming you into this, you know, learning experience wouldn't feel more strongly about vaccines. I mean, I, I have no idea who they are or, you know, it, it's just a surprise to me, given honestly Puerto Rico has been very concerned about the coronavirus. There's been a lot of press about that. So I'm just curious about your conversations with your contacts in Puerto Rico and how that has maybe not come up, the issue of vaccines. I know we're giving you a hard time about this, but this is a committee that's very concerned about the safety of our kids and also the safety of the people that our kids interact with.
Absolutely. And I will say too, that I'm glad that the conversation is taking place. I find that with our school boards or with our educators, that this isn't a back and forth or you're, you know, it's not the matter of digging in. This is on behalf of student safety. You know, that's, that's why we're having this conversation. And it shows to me that this is a team of people that truly does care about the general safety of the students. Now, what I will say is we do actually have staff down in Puerto Rico working directly for EF. So it's not necessarily even just those vendors. We are in constant communication with this team. And what we have found right now is that the itinerary itself will not be impacted. If there is a change in that, that is something that we would raise. And we've seen that to be the case with some of these different destinations where there is a safety concern or there is, you know, the flag raised with the team that says we do need vaccinations now in order for the students to have a positive experience here on tour. That is not currently the case in Puerto Rico, and we hear that consistently weekly from our team there. And if that does change, that's something that we would raise to our educators. That had been the case in New York. That's the current case in San Francisco for students traveling to San Francisco. So as I mentioned, it really has been taken case by case based upon the district. And if that is something the school would like to do is say, this is a requirement for students to participate, then we are here to back the school 100%. We are more so kind of this intermediary between the destination and the, the things in which the students are participating. We're here to make it happen.
And one last question to put you on the spot yet again.
Yep.
Does staff require that its own staff be vaccinated?
So are you speaking in regard to the staff that the students will be interacting with?
Well, speaking about the agency itself.
So.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, in our Cambridge office currently. So we have 1,200 people that work out of Cambridge. Myself and Kat here are Boston-based as well. So coming to you all from Malden this evening. We are requiring vaccination for our staff that are returning to the office. And all of our tour guides that the students will be with on tour, we're also requiring vaccination for them as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Of course.
Anyone else? I'll be honest, I'm struggling a little with this. I mean, we're still a school where masks are required in school. And we're going to be putting kids on the plane where they'll have to wear a mask. But then when they get there, there's no protocols.
No, that, no, the, it, the, and I just want to, I didn't, I don't think I misread this. They, the students will be masked. It says indoors and outdoors. I mean, you know, as an educator, Michelle, how compliant the kids are likely to be 24/7 with masks in a place that's not home.
How many are in a room?
That's, yeah.
How many students would be in a room?
There will be four students in every room sleeping together.
And so some of those students might be vaccinated and some might not.
I would think you'd want to have the kids who are vaccinated together. I mean, as you know, vaccinated people can still spread the virus, but at least you'd have, you know, that group that was fully protected. It would also perhaps provide an incentive for students whose families have chosen not to have them vaccinated to maybe consider vaccination. I mean, that's just a, a thought. I know that we can't start ma- micromanaging the, the protocols and the experience for the kids. But, you know, when you have, when you're combining vaccinated and unvaccinated people, obviously they're not going to be wearing their masks while they're sleeping.
Right.
So I would think that at least out of consideration for those who have chosen to be vaccinated, that they could be with others who likewise have taken that safer route.
Sure. I think this is something that we could definitely accommodate. It's actually up to the group leaders. In this case, this would be Ms. Neely to make the room assignments. If that's something that she'd like to take into consideration on the behalf of the school, that's absolutely, absolutely something that we will support and work with Ms. Neely on that one.
Michelle?
Nancy?
Michelle?
Yeah.
Okay. So I agree with you. And I think on the last trip that we just approved at the last meeting, I believe it was, to go to Greece and so forth, and they all had to have proof of vaccination. I think if we're going to vote to send kids to any place on a plane that isn't, you know, not a field trip or a day trip or a week, you know, whatever in the United States. I understand that it's considered a domestic destination. But I feel, I would feel much better if every kid, everybody on this trip, this, this trip, education first, was vaccinated. And with Dr. Cabral saying about having a conversation, yeah, there's a big conversation that can be had about whether people are vaccinated or not vaccinated. But with a school committee that is approving a trip on a plane to another country, get vaccinated. So maybe Gemily can give more light. Maybe the kids that have already signed up are vaccinated and we don't even need to have this conversation.
No, but it's a precedent. Jackie?
Also, I was wondering, so you're saying now in Puerto Rico, they're not requiring it. But what if they start requiring it and the kids don't have enough time to get vaccinated before they leave for the trip? I mean, that's the other thing I'm thinking about. How would that be handled?
Much safer to go ahead and do it. Yeah.
Yeah. So are you asking, Jaclyn, in the circumstance that, say, there's a mandate put in place a week before the departure, correct?
Right. Yeah, correct.
So the options that we do have with that is if there are any sort of government mandates that come up between now and that date of departure, the school has a lot of flexibility. So in the instance that Puerto Rico says, all right, we're requiring that vaccination now. We have flexi- flexibility in both destination and actual date of the tour. So if it's something that the school wanted to say, you know what, we would like for the vaccinations to be in place, or Puerto Rico says we're going to require that, we can always pick this up and move it to the summertime. We can pick it up and move it to after graduation. We can postpone this trip. So I think what it comes down to is we have a lot of flexibility when it comes to the actual date, especially if there's any sort of change when it comes to government mandates within the, the city and, you know, in Puerto Rico itself.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Jen?
So I wonder if we can, if we can vote on this as is, but have a separate conversation about, about vaccine requirements for trips in general. And then if we need to inform or, you know, a kind of update the, the, the travel information for this group and let them know that in order to sign up, you know, if, if we did decide to require vaccines, can, you know, can that be communicated out to students and families later? Like, can we approve the trip now? And, and handle that later? Because I do think that there is, you know, there is a, a different consideration when we're going to be having students spending, you know, sleeping, sharing hotel rooms overnight. Obviously, they won't be masked in those situations. They'll be eating together. You know, there'll be a lot of, of, of unmasked exposure, which is different from, say, just going on a field trip or, or something else that might just be a crossing state line sort of event.
So my, my pushback on that, and I don't know if this is valid or not. Say we let it go through without a mask mandate, people redeposit their money into this trip, and then we say, oh, now, now there is a mask mandate. And now maybe somebody doesn't want to get vaccinated for whatever reason. Not, and not like a medical exemption or something. They just, that's not their choice. Then they've deposited on a trip and we've changed the conditions.
So in terms of, of getting approval, would a delay in approving until we can just further discuss and vote on a, a general vaccine policy for travel, it really interfere with this trip moving forward? Or is there sufficient flexibility that we could vote on this at a later date?
From, from what I can tell from the information I got from Gemily, the final enrollment date is December 24th. So I think that gives us a little bit of time. It'd be, it'd be, it'd be a pretty fast registration process. But I don't know if Caroline or Kat, you think that that's feasible if we don't vote for another two weeks, you would say probably after Thanksgiving?
Next meeting is December 9th.
So that would only give families, I know, I'm not, I'm not a math person, a week and a half to, to register.
I mean, we could always throw in a workshop where we just talk about this. We could always throw in a workshop where we just talk about this one issue in between if we want.
I think that might be, if, if schedules allow, that might be fairer to the families who would be considering this trip, because that is a very short turnaround if we delay.
I think it's a very good idea. And, you know, I think that it's a conversation we probably should be starting soon anyway, you know, in a broader sense for a variety of situations or circumstances. So I'm not saying we would take on the whole thing in the workshop now. That presumably that would be limited to the discussion about trips in general and certainly to this particular trip. But I do think that it's, it could be the start of a larger conversation that I'm sure that we're going to really need to undertake regardless. I, I like the idea of a workshop if we can, if we can accommodate that in our schedules. So.
What do the rest of you think? Nancy, Jackie, Jen?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Having a workshop is fine.
You're good with that, Jackie?
Jackie's idea.
Confirming.
I think you changed your mind quickly.
Okay. Do we have to vote to table it? Or?
Yeah, you can table it until a workshop or the December 9th meeting.
You could table it till the workshop, but because it's always listed as a possible vote. And then, you know, we can decide at the workshop whether we want to vote on the spot or go to December 9th.
Okay. So we need to vote to table it though, is my question?
Yes.
Or we can just do it. Okay. So I would like to make a motion to table the potential approval of the trip to Puerto Rico until we can have a workshop to, um, discuss, uh, potential mask mandates for.
Vaccine.
Vaccine mandate.
M- mandate. Thank you. Um, for trips that require getting on an airplane or whatever.
Wiseman second.
All right. Roll call vote?
Oh, Neil, yes.
Your answer, yes?
Yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for all your information, Caroline and Katrina. You were very helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you all.
All right. Next up, discussion and possible vote of an out of state field trip.
Dr. Cabral? And here's, here's Mr. Getchell. Mr. Getchell, the principal of Richardson Olmstead School is here. He would like to present based on an idea that they have to support a fifth grade student at their school. And I will allow him to speak on the topic, make the presentation based on the handout you received in your packet. And you can address any questions, of course, to Mr. Getchell. Go right ahead, Mr. Getchell.
Okay. Thank you for having me tonight. Nice to see you all. Yes, we have a fifth grader at our school who has tried out and earned a spot in the, in the Nutcracker Performance in Providence, Rhode Island. She actually has two roles. She's been doing ballet for a long time. And I learned of this through the director of the Nutcracker in Providence. She reached out to me and asked if I'd be interested in taking her classmates to see her perform on December 21st at 10:00 AM in Providence. And because it's an out of state field trip, I'm here. So it is, our, my proposal is to take our fifth graders to Providence on December 21st. We would leave school approximately 9:00 AM. The show starts at 10:00 AM. And it is two hours and we would be leaving Providence at around noon. And we should be back so it wouldn't interfere with bus traffic for the other schools. Our PTA has agreed to fund the entirety of this trip. So it would be a way for us to provide the ballet experience for all of our fifth graders. As a school, we are, you know, mindful of the fact that these fifth graders at RO have had a rocky run, as everybody else has. The pandemic broke when they were in March in third grade. So many of these kids have never had a field trip at our school. So we are looking for ways to provide safe enrichment activities for our fifth graders in particular this year, who really have missed out on a lot of things we normally do as a school. So this would be one way to do that. I've been assured by the, the director that full COVID protocols will be, would be followed. It is a big theater, so we're, we are able to space out our kids. We would just be bringing our students and our staff, not any chaperones. And we would keep our students si- sitting in the same clusters that they sit with all day at, at RO to limit contact tracing, which has been very effective thus far as a school. So it would be just staff and students only. And like I said, it would just be that, that one day. It shouldn't impact busing. So obviously there'd be mask mandates at school, on the bus, and at the theater. And that's, that is what I have so far. So I'll take any questions if you have them.
Anyone have any questions?
Ms. Jen?
Actually, don't have any questions, but I just wanted to say, when I saw this, I was like, this is awesome. So, um, super, I, I hope, assuming we don't have any, any major issues that come up from, from my colleagues here. I just think it's, it's a great way to show support and, like you said, to give the kids something fun to look forward to. And, and, you know, with, with the PTA covering the cost and it seems like all the logistics are really well thought out. So I just, I love this idea. So kudos for, you know, I know you have a lot on your plate, but for kind of taking that call and talking and saying, you know what, maybe let's see if we can make a, you know, figure out a way to make this happen. I, I commend you for that because that's great.
Thank you, Jen.
Caroline?
I agree with everything Jen said. And also I think what a wonderful opportunity to promote cultural literacy. So I, I just think it's fantastic on every level.
Yeah, this particular theater group in Providence actually sends our teachers common core-related activities and STEM-related activities that connect to the ballet to do prior to the trip. So I've been pretty impressed with the theater and, um, And like I said, just to provide our all of our kids equal access to this cultural experience, I think is fantastic, so. It's good. I think it's a great opportunity, and the fact that one of our students is up there performing makes it even more special.
That's amazing. That's wonderful. Anyone else? All right. Can I get a motion to approve the grade five R O students going to the vet on December twenty first? Or to see their peer in the Nutcracker Ballet?
Wiseman, so much. Star, second. Sorry.
Wait a certain amount of seconds.
I know, me too.
O'Neill, absolutely yes.
Durant, yes?
Luukku, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Wonderful. Awesome. Enjoy.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, early college and career paths. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. We've been talking about this in bits and pieces for a while now. As you know, for the last ten months, at least, we have been working with the Education Alliance based Alliance based out of Natick. And through that collaboration, we have been meeting with colleges and universities and certification providers. Excuse me, in order to investigate two important components that are intricately linked to our district strategic plan. We have been endeavoring to really provide opportunities for three subgroups in particular, our English language learners, our special education population, and opportunities for advanced learners. And when I say advanced learners, I just want to make sure that I qualify that by saying we're not using perhaps and maybe an outdated terminology of advanced learner. We have the belief that every student has an area in which they are advanced and that it's important that we have opportunities to provide to each of those students when they need it, where they need it, to advance their learning, understanding, curiosity, interests, and so forth in any particular areas. So in order to to try to provide new and innovative opportunities for those subgroups, we started at the high school considering two things in particular. One is career pathways and the other is early college. So career pathways, well, I'll start with early college. Early college is it's it's not the same as dual enrollment or taking advanced placement courses. What we're finding with the advanced placement courses is that a lot of colleges and universities now are not taking the credits when a student matriculates into their institution. Or they're only taking a score of a five or a score of a four or five instead of a three, four, or five. And so students who are are thinking they're taking a course, a college course for a college credit are are not necessarily getting credits based on one test as opposed to all of the assessments in a particular course. The other thing is we we kind of call those one-offs. In other words, a student may, and there's nothing wrong with advanced placement, the the college level rigor is very important. I'm just going to explain the difference between that and early college. The other thing about the one-offs is, yes, student gets definitely an understanding of the college experience, the college rigor, the college level. However, they're a one-off in the sense that they may take, even if they take course many of the offerings that we have at Oliver Ames, which are which are many and diverse. They're not linked together in a particular program or a particular pathway once they enter college. They may satisfy G E Rs or general education requirements, like an English course or a math course, but they're not on a particular track toward a major or a a career. This, the dual enrollment program is kind of the same thing in terms of one-offs. Dual enrollment is when a student is a a high school student, but they are taking a college course at a local college or university. Back when Oliver Ames moved to a rotating schedule for many complicated reasons, it made it very difficult, if not impossible in some cases, for a student to enroll in dual enrollment. As you know, college courses are offered at a certain time of the day, certain days of the week. And having a rotating schedule does not accommodate the ability for a student to leave at the set set time every Tuesday and Thursday, for example. So we, a group of superintendents in this area, including myself, we have tried to reimagine how we might be able to offer students the opportunity to explore college courses, explore what it means to be part of a university or college community. And for Easton anyway, we were particularly interested in focusing on our special education and English learner populations who are traditionally underrepresented in the students that enroll in four-year colleges or universities. So we worked primarily on securing some relationships with state colleges first. And in a way that offers students the opportunity to who who may not have thought of pursuing a college degree to dip their toe into what taking a college course might be like while they're still a high school student. And they still have support from Guidance Department, it's, for example, and at a very low-cost option. And locally, as opposed to needing transportation to the college or university. And also with the flexibility of being able to work with students' schedules, whether that means in the evening, on the weekends, during the summer. And in some cases, we may even be able, with certain institutions, to work it out so they can do it during the school day, but working with our schedule. So it provided a lot more options for our students. In addition, we tried to leverage our ability to negotiate with colleges and universities by engaging with these other schools in our area, which I'll name in a moment, who are who we loosely have been calling ourselves the South Shore Consortium. To my knowledge, we're the first in in the Commonwealth to create such a consortium. And the reason that this leverages us as a group is we have economy of scale. We also have, it it multiplies our resources. So for example, if if Oliver Ames, you know, for for most colleges and universities, you need minimum number of students in off in order for them to offer a course. If we had a physics course or an engineering course, and we had maybe six students at Oliver Ames who were interested, we traditionally wouldn't be able to offer something like this. But with ten other communities who are close by, we can combine our students in order to offer not only sections, but perhaps multiple sections in the same area with different schedules to meet the needs of students. So we've been meeting regularly. The schools are Attleboro, Avon, Brockton, East Bridgewater, Easton, of course, Hanover, Holbrook, King Philip, Norton, Situate, and Time. We've had a lot of inquiry about our consortium and colleagues who are asking to learn more about it and perhaps join us. But these are the the current participants. So we're we're pretty excited about this. One of our neighbors actually started this in the fall. We were not quite organized enough yet for that. And and the school we were working with at the time was not able to offer what it was our students were interested in. So in that meantime, between fall and now, the Guidance Department has done some surveys for students, and they were really telling and very interesting in what students were were anxious to pursue at the college level. And so we are planning for spring courses for students, summer, and then again for next fall. Now, this program, we're in its infancy, of course, and we're just starting out. The agreement, though, that we're making with one another and and to our students is that once this is fully in place, students will have the opportunity to earn up to thirty undergraduate credits before graduation, if they choose. They could receive three credits if they decide to take one course, but they could receive up to thirty. And the benefit of this versus the quote-unquote one-offs is that we are in the process of creating matriculation creating articulation agreements with these institutions to agree that they would accept a series of courses from our students to be able to matriculate into the program of their institution. We have already met with UMass Dartmouth, but we, I most recently, last week, met with Marty Mian, who has agreed that these will be accepted at all of the UMass all of the UMass system. We have met with Boston Architectural College, most recently Kelly Kavanaugh and Christopher went up to the campus. And we have an interesting agreement with them that we have a new teacher in industrial arts this year who is teaching an engineering course. And Boston Architectural College has agreed to give us curriculum, some units of instruction free of charge. They've given us some videos. They are going to be meeting with the teacher to talk about the the progression of of what the students are learning. And they have already agreed that any students who take the courses that are aligned with Boston Architectural College and pass them will automatically be accepted to the college. They will not actually need to apply. They will be accepted if they're part of the program. In addition, we have William James College, who is the largest provider of undergraduate mental health graduates, which, of course, is an area that is in significant need of filling that pipeline. We also, I just met with the dean of undergraduate admission for Cambridge College. And we also have an agreement with the American Safety Training, soon to be the College of American Safety. And that is right now, it's a certificate-earning program. They offer certified nursing assistant, E M T, first responder, and of course, first aid, A E D. But they are actually going to be working in conjunction with William James, and they are going to be offering college credits for those classes. So we are now turning our eye toward more. I just met with Dr. Samuels from the Education Alliance, who is putting us in contact. He he not only puts us in contact with these colleges and universities, but then he helps us, he he is also an attorney, and he helps us write up our articulation agreements with these institutions. And we have a series of meetings set up. I'm probably not going to say the names of the schools just yet, because I don't, I certainly don't want them to feel pressured in any way. But we have another half dozen for pursuing business, finance, marine biology, physical and biological sciences, and education, which is another pipeline that needs significant significant employees in the workforce. So we're extremely excited about this in terms of the courses we're going to offer and the students who are taking it. I'm actually not going to describe that tonight, because the Guidance Department and Kelly Kavanaugh at the high school are really excited to present that themselves. We don't have those final numbers, so the presentation is a lot more compelling and interesting if you have that. I just wanted to kind of lay the groundwork. The agreement that was sent to you in your packet is the M O U. It's an inter-municipal agreement between these school systems that I just described. We have decided as a group to be more formal about our consortium. So now we are calling ourselves the South Shore Consortium. What that does is it allows us to to, first of all, it it formalizes our agreements with one another to be sure that we are sharing our resources and that we are letting students take courses in their respective communities. But it also allows us to do things like apply for grants. So interestingly, after we began this work this past summer, the Commissioner of Education at our annual institute for superintendents announced that a major priority for his administration was going to be early college. So we fortunately were ahead of the game, because we already had this informal, at the time, consortium. But now the grants are coming out. In fact, I put in for one hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant yesterday on behalf of Easton and the consortium. And so we would like to finalize our agreement with one another. So I certainly want to answer any questions or concerns you might have about this. I would like to sign this on behalf of of the department. I do want to add that in addition to the college, we also have the career pathways. So I don't know if you remember, but two to three years ago, the high school worked very hard on putting together these wonderful their their graphics that we shared with you that explored career pathways. And so it had, you know, career, and then it had the courses you would need at Oliver Ames, in particular, the competencies, the skills, those kinds of things, to give students an understanding of what really was required to pursue any particular career field. And through these agreements, we are hoping to give students the opportunity to, again, explore what careers might be of interest to them. We're not expecting that every student is going to be leaving Oliver Ames with thirty credits to enter college. If they do, that's great. What a wonderful way, particularly in this economy, to help our students, particularly those who do not have the resources to attend colleges and universities of their first choice. However, this allows them to get an idea of these one-on-one courses that some college students just begin exploring when they are actually at college. And it also gives them to explore the opportunity of what they don't want to pursue in college for very expensive tuition costs. So I'm just as satisfied with the student who tries one or two college courses, whether it's in the health field, oh, health, sorry, health sciences is another area that students express interest in as 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 well as law and the justice system. So we're we're working on those areas as well. It is just as satisfying to me if a student takes college courses while they're in high school and decides, I just don't want anything to do with healthcare, for example, or I don't want anything to do with computer science. As it is, if they find something that they think they're interested in, they really do find the area interested interesting once they are immersed in it, and then they continue to take courses that 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 they then can apply when they are going to the school. There's a lot of really strong research that I'm sure you agree makes perfect sense, that the number of students who stay in college and go to college when they were involved in one of these programs is much higher than students who are not involved in a program. And because we're a consortium and because we're making our agreements with, as a group, with these colleges and universities, we're able to be very creative in our requests. So for example, we've started talking to them about So for example, we've started talking to them about, you know, even if we offer a hybrid or a hybrid course or an online course or a course that is in Avon that our students attend, or even in Easton, that we can create an experience where they can see what college is like, so that they can spend a weekend, or even a week, or a couple of weeks in the summer, living on campus with the cohort that they're taking courses with, so that they can get that feel for the college experience. So they kind of have the best of both worlds. They're able to pursue this type of study in the safety bubble of being a high school student, but they also get to experience that college life, even if for a short time. They get to be immersed in that, and we have found that the colleges and universities are very excited about that aspect. This is really, we're aware this is a win-win because, as you know, many students have been taking gap years. They've been having alternative employment, like Instagram, or they're influencers, or what have you. And so colleges and universities are looking to up their enrollment. And this works for them as a model, and it certainly works for us. We do have ESER money, right now, federal grant money, that can be used, or is recommended to be used specifically for applications like this. So we are hoping for the first year, we have ESER funds for three years. We're hoping for the first year, possibly the second, maybe even the third, we might be able to pay for the college credits for students. After that, it certainly depends on what we have in our operating budget, but we're going to work awfully hard to continue receiving these early college grants and finding a way that we can either pay for the credits for students or subsidize the cost of the credit for students. So I believe that's all I have on that. But if you have any questions, certainly I'm very interested in answering any questions that you have. And just know that the high school is going to be bringing a much more specific presentation to you with what we're going to be starting with in terms of courses and certificate programs.
Does anyone have any questions, comments? Caroline?
I feel like I'm kind of dominating the conversation tonight. But I just would like a little clarification now. Boston Architectural College is a private college, or is it a public college?
That's a private school.
Yeah, go ahead.
The two areas that students expressed interest in there, interestingly, was architecture and landscape architecture. Very Richardson Olmsted-ish. So they have programs and degrees in both. And so I thought that was really interesting for students from Easton to be interested in those areas in particular.
I agree. Now, I think both William James and Cambridge College are also private?
That's true.
Has there been an effort to associate with maybe some colleges that, I'll be honest, have a more rigorous curriculum than perhaps William James and Cambridge College? I do know quite a bit about both of those schools. They're fine. But I was just wondering, like, for example, Stonehill has not been interested in doing something like this, maybe?
Well, like I said, there are a half a dozen that we're working with meeting right now. And so I think once I'm able to tell you those names, you will understand why we approach them for the particular programs that we approach them for.
And when you said that Marty Mian has agreed that credits would be accepted at all UMass institutions, that's literally all? Like, including UMass Amherst, for example?
Literally all.
That's great. That is terrific. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you. That's really exciting. All right. Next stop is public comments.
There are no questions at this time.
All right, thank you. Superintendent notes, Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. We do have a small update on COVID, so I will let Mrs. Pruitt talk about that. The other is, I just want to note for the public that we did at-town meeting request, and it was voted that we received, it was approved that two hundred thousand dollars was going to be put back into the Special Education Fund that was created at the town level several years ago. We did have to use that money for unanticipated special education tuitions, or a good portion of it, over a hundred thousand of it. And so we have looked to put money back into that fund because, as we are aware, that is a very difficult to anticipate number. It can only be used for unanticipated tuition and expenses. And so that is, of course, monitored at the town level as well. So we have to have a vote to put money into it, and we did that, and so that money is in there. And that's it for this evening.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent notes?
Sure. So I just wanted to alert everyone that while our COVID numbers have not been extremely high, we have seen a slight increase this past week. I think that's very complimentary to what we're seeing throughout the Commonwealth as well. And it is not, it is with both vaccinated and unvaccinated. So that is something just to alert you to. And just to remind everyone and all viewers that there is the dashboard that is being kept up to date and is being made public with the new numbers every Wednesday at 5:00 PM. So you can find that on our website. Does anyone have questions about COVID-related topics before I move on?
Before you move on from COVID, I'm sorry, I need to add something. I'm working with Mrs. Kennedy from the Easton Health Department, and we are going to be offering a vaccine clinic for five-to-eleven-year-olds. It will be at the Easton Middle School. The first dose will be given on December seventeenth. The second dose will be on January seventh. The clinic will be from four to eight PM. I just want to note, parents should not be alarmed if they have not received this information yet. In order to register, we are waiting for a link, which I believe Ms. Kennedy may have just sent me. And once we have the opportunity, we're going to put all the information together. We will send it to all parents and staff, and the signups will be through that link that is going to be provided via email. So please wait for that link. And then if you have any questions about the handout, the information, and the link, then please let us know. This is for all five-through-eleven-year-olds, and that includes any children who are not residents of Easton. So if we have staff members, for example, who live in another town and they have children, if who they want to bring to the clinic, it is open to them. Anyone that maybe goes to Maplewood or the YMCA, who may not live in Easton, it's for all children. So you do not need to be a resident of Easton in order to take advantage of this clinic. As long as slots are available, you may sign up for it. So I will get that information out as soon as possible.
Thank you. Chrissy, did you have any more?
Yes, I do, but I don't know if Jen has a question.
Yeah, just wanted to share that the Globe is reporting that the student, that the school COVID weekly rate has reached an all-time high as of this reporting period, so.
This report, meaning this school year?
No, actually, it says higher, the current caseload is higher than at any point last year for schools.
I'm actually very surprised by that personally.
Yeah, there were Right, so we're looking good compared to the state, but it's just Thirty-eight hundred cases last week.
And I will say that our peak point last year was right after the Thanksgiving and winter vacation periods. So we are, and that is anticipated statewide, to be a problem, period, for COVID. So we definitely encourage people to be extra cautious around that time. And we just should be aware and prepared that, again, it was our highest point of COVID cases last year. And we shouldn't be surprised if it also goes higher than we are experiencing now after the same period this year.
Correct. Are there any other questions about COVID? Okay, I just wanted to also share with you that we had our Professional Development Day this past Friday. We really took a lot of time for our educators to have time to collaborate together and plan. One of the things that we have implemented, especially in our K-through-three classrooms, is they are implementing two new programs, one being Foundations and the other is No Adam. As you know, No Adam has been here, but it was put on pause because of COVID. So they are in full implementation. So they had time to model lessons for each other, walk through lessons together. It was a great day for their planning. The middle school participated in the morning. They were trained in the ADL program, the Anti-Defamation League Peer Mentoring Program. That was done virtually, unfortunately, because sometimes I think some of those trainings are much more powerful in person. However, the feedback has been great about the ADL presentation, so I'm encouraged about that. Our high school, and then in the afternoon, they also had time with their departments. Our high school worked with their departments and then spent time collaborating together on best practices for student engagement. So that was another great, great time and well-spent. Our Adjustment Counselors and Related Services worked with a clinical psychologist, Nadja Riley, Dr. Nadja Riley from Teachers 21. She has been instrumental in working with us around really looking at the intersection between DEI Work, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and Social Emotional Learning. So we are just beginning that work with her, and she's also working with our cabinet as well. So I just also wanted to share with you, No Adam, we started this year more intense professional development with our K-2 teachers. It's called CHAMPs. It's actually not an acronym, and it's all capitalized, and we're not exactly sure why. But in fact, the No Adam people also agree with us and are not sure why it's all capitalized because it's not an acronym. But it is an intense professional learning community and opportunity where we are really thinking about deeper learning within, for our students, and deeper understanding. And so it's not just, here's the manual and this is what you teach, but it's really going into classrooms, looking and listening to what the students are talking about. In fact, we had a wonderful presentation. Sheila Dever-David, kindergarten, who's one of our curriculum leaders, she actually invited us into her classroom, and just hearing the kindergartners talk about why the sun makes certain items, you know, on the surface warmer than when they're in the shade. And those investigatory conversations really were enlightening. And just hearing the vocabulary from our kindergartners, it was wonderful. So we are continuing that. And then lastly, I wanted to share with you, one of my favorite things of the year is our NASA Hunch program has been launched, no pun intended. And it was a virtual launch. And we had our representatives from the NASA Hunch program on with our students. And I have to tell you, this is our third year of implementation of the program. And this year, the kids were more excited than I've ever seen them before, and it was great. It was our family consumer science classes, as well as Mr. Seuss's class. They are working together and just, you know, looking at the product that they're going to make and seeing how they can actually put something in outer space. They just were really excited and to hear that they were going to be official employees of NASA, you know, the NASA Hunch program. They just, I mean, you could just see the expression on their faces. And actually, when the kids all left, I stayed on with the representatives from NASA Hunch and Betty Almeida, and we just commented, and Sue Sweeney, the department chair, on how excited the kids were. So we're, you know, I know we're still in the middle of the pandemic, and it's been a really difficult year, but there is wonderful learning going on in our classrooms, and the dedication of our staff continues to, you know, just promote the, and they're working hard to engage all students, and our students are really having great opportunities. So I just wanted to share that update with you on teaching and learning.
Thank you. Caroline?
That was really great to see. You know, I feel like most of this meeting has revolved around just new, exciting opportunities for kids, which is fantastic. I did want to, I should have probably mentioned this when Bill Matthews was here, but it was really going to be a school committee comment. But I know that there's been a lot of press about the very unfortunate incidents in some other districts with sports teams, you know, hazing and worse. And one of the things that I found, I know that Bill Matthews is all over this and is, you know, very diligent about working with coaches and so on to ensure that unfortunate incidents like happened in Danvers and elsewhere don't happen, you know, but it's a tough. That part of his job is tough, particularly in these times. But I did see an article from someone who works in a sports organization that is dedicated to what they call social emotional learning-slash-sports psychology. They actually are creating a curriculum, and it would involve evaluating coaches along, you know, various, in relation to various standards. But I'm just wondering if any sort of larger program, if we're looking at anything like that to, for our athletes specifically. I guess that question is for either Chrissy or Leisha.
Sure. So the MIAA has actually come out, and they are mandating, it's actually a pilot this year, but they are going to be requiring all student athletes to participate in a program around diversity, equity, and inclusion. So it is something that they will have to go through in order to participate in sports. So that is one of the things that the MIAA has done. And we are in line with what they are recommending, or actually mandating. So that's where we're bouncing off from there. And then if we find a need for more programming or more specific instruction, I know that, as you said, Bill Matthews is phenomenal, and we are very lucky in Easton to have him as our athletic director. And he will definitely, I will work with him to make sure that we are embedding any programming, additional programming that's needed.
And we have brought in programming, for example, through the ADL, to work with teams and coaches. So we have done things, and we will continue to.
Well, obviously, working with students is critical, but also coaches. Unfortunately, some of the incidents that you hear about, even actively-involved coaches in some instances, and certainly involve, I guess I'd call it negligence by coaches. So, you know, I think, I do know that Bill is great at, you know, addressing those issues. But I just wanted to mention it because there has been a lot of press lately about some very Thank you. That's it for tonight.
Are you all set, Chrissy?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, school committee notes. Caroline, you're all set?
I thought that's what, I thought that's what we were, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you didn't actually announce school committee notes, but that was my school committee note. Thank you.
Nancy?
Okay, I have a couple things. First of all, it's American Education Week. It ends tomorrow. So I just want to celebrate all of our educators and everything they do every day, Um you know, from administrators to custodians and everybody in between. I mean, it's American Education Week and we're very lucky to have a system of education that benefits almost everybody, I guess. I can't say everyone because that's never true. So anyway, congratulations to our educators. Um the Moscato Mile was held today over, it was the, an Easton Middle School event that was held at the high school. Um they were supposed to have it tomorrow, but found out that today's weather was supposed to be beautiful, so they moved it. And it's kind of funny because today is the Great American Smokeout. So when I was talking to some of the students today and they said, smokeout, what is that? They, nobody had any clue what the Great American Smokeout was, but when the Moscato Mile started, it was the Thursday before Thanksgiving to s- to bring awareness to stop smoking. So the kids were funny. They were like, what? What's the Great American Smokeout? What a beautiful day. The kids had, they, you know, they were great. They just did what everybody told them to do. All the teachers and parents and every single staff member was there um helping out. So that was nice.
Great day to be outside for November, no less.
Yeah, absolutely. Um another item, um it's nice to drive by the Blanching School and see it wrapped in purple, one of my favorite colors. And uh very excited to um maybe possibly go on one of those tours. I know Jackie went last week. So um I'm I'm, I'm very excited about the new school. And then I just have another question that came up about graduation um this year. And there's a few questions. And I just, I need to get some more information. I don't know if a poll has been put out or whatever, but there's a rumor or a something. I don't know if it's true or not true, but um that it's going to be moved to the high school instead of Frothingham Park. So um just bringing that up as a point of information to um, you know, find out what the plan is. And, you know, in nineteen seventy-nine, um Oliver Ames began having their graduation at Frothingham Park. And for me, Frothingham Park is just a treasure to the town. Nothing wrong with the high school.
I don't want to interrupt you, Nancy, but that is a rumor, just so that you're not overly concerned.
All right, thank you.
That is a rumor and I, I'm sorry, I thought I answered that already, so I apologize. That is a rumor.
Well, okay, so as of right now, graduation is at the park.
I don't want to announce anything because that is what the principal always does. It's just that she does her newsletter and she would like to do it.
Okay.
Herself.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm just, you know, I had questions. I've gotten information from several places. So I just wanted to get it all together.
And and please feel free to continue. I didn't want to interrupt you. I just didn't want you to.
That was it. I mean, I'm just saying, no, that's fine. And and that's what I, I don't have all the facts yet and I would like to get them. So that, that's all that I was asking about. Okay, that's all for me.
All right, Jackie?
So I wasn't going to say anything, but yes, I went on a tour of the school last week and it was unbelievable how much is done. We were seeing the last pouring of concrete in one area. I mean, there are hallways, there are walls up, the ramp was starting to come to you. It's just awesome. Definitely go on a tour. Um I love driving by the building. I love to see the progress, but actually being able to walk inside was really something else. So I highly recommend it.
That's exciting. I hope to be able to do that too. Uh Jen?
Um much, um, oh, uh, high school had their, the musical tryouts. So again, another sign of of things returning somewhat to normals. They'll be doing Legally Blonde in the spring and I'm really looking forward to that. So yeah, sounds like the, in, you know, I I heard some of the casting and it sounds, some of the kids, I'm like, absolutely, you know? Yes, that is a hundred percent the right person for that role. They're going to do a great job. Um so uh yeah, so I'm glad for all the kids who tried out and and who got their parts and and hopefully they're all excited to to roll up their sleeves and get to work on something really fun and exciting. And then I think before we meet again, um winter sport tryouts will happen the week after Thanksgiving. So we are rolling right along with the next group of activities. So good luck to all the students uh who will be trying out for those teams. And we look forward to watching you compete over the winter season. And I think that's all I have for this week.
All right, thank you. Okay, before we go to executive session, I have our next meeting on December ninth at five o'clock. With the exception of we might put in a workshop between now and then, but that's what I have. And we're returning to five o'clock, starting the next regular meeting.
Michelle, I do want to, I I know it came in after public comment, but I think it's a uh i- i- is there a question there that wants, that we should address or did public comment close?
I, public comment's over, Jen.
Okay.
Um, okay, so I would like to make a motion to enter to executive session and not to return to open session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to litigation and bargaining. Do I have a second?
Wasn't second.
All right, roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
Deluca, yes.
Star yes.
All right, thank you. All ready. Thank you.
Night.
Night.